He's got a long trip ahead of him, so he's gonna be here to talk to the council about some things that they've got going on in Evers right now. So, Eric, this is Preston McLean. Preston's been on the council probably for thirty some years, I'd say, all the way.
Thank you.
Bless his heart.
That's close. This is Ernie Woodruff. He's worked with councilmen, he's been here a long time. Everybody's been here a long time. Larry Cottle, Charlie Couch, this is Jackie Rinn for Old Jackie, he's probably been here thirty some years now, I'd say. And then back here, we've got our water plant operator, which is Woody, which will probably be dealing with Woody some. We have our two new beers here. The man right beside you there is the myth, the legend, Cleedon Powers.
Yes, me too.
This is our city clerk, which is our most important person, Presti Layman.
In charge of the books.
I'm gonna let Eric talk to you guys, he can introduce himself and talk to you guys about what he's here to talk to you about.
Well, good afternoon and good evening. I'm a little dirty. I've been in Nashville, North Carolina for a weekend running heavy equipment, trying to help out the flood victims. So, drove straight here for this meeting and I head to Paducah, Kentucky for Leadership Kentucky, and now I gotta be there at seven in the morning. So, make it quick and brief and get out your own hair. I'm the son of a coal miner, family of coal miners, L. Litch County, here on the Yaffa and Flat Gap, Kentucky, where I originally come from. Spent many nights, many moons, here riding four-wheelers and efforts and all around here and having a good time as a young man. My life changed a lot. Dressed clean, six years old. My daddy was a paralyzed, I'm the son of a paralyzed coal miner. My daddy was a proud man. Daddy didn't take handouts. We struggled to get by because my daddy's also a frequent Baptist preacher, wouldn't like to get social security. Which brought a lot of morality and way of ethics and way of life to me as a grown man now. But, um, I was just like a lot of our youth. I joined the military, get the heck out of Eastern Kentucky. That was my goal and ambition in life was to lead. And I lived in Tennessee, the promised land on Cherokee Lake for many, many moons. Got a job on Norfolk Southern Railroad, first one of many. Mayor can vouch for a few of them because I stole them from his company. But, um, you know, that started an initiative for me is how can I get some of our local people to get paid jobs, which is for their region? And throughout my timeframe of railroad, I started something called the Dragon Slayer Highway One Sixty over on Black Mountain, which is now rated number three in the nation for motorcycle destinations, and I believe will take number two next year. And it evolved. I was just a full-time railroader trying to do something good for a little town I cared about. And I got to the point that I had to make a life-long decision, give up pension and benefits for the opportunity to get this funded and really run with it. And that's what I done. Prayed about it, quit my real job and hit the ground running. And with a blue-collar kind of work ethic versus, you know, no disrespect to all these executive directors and Don Proffis, I don't have a doctorate degree, but I do have a common sense, an Appalachian wheel, and I think that sets me apart, an organization apart. But throughout our timeframe, started in Carling County, we expanded down to Kentucky, West Virginia, Southern Ohio, and now Pennsylvania, starting in twenty twenty-five. Last year, last year, we brought in seventy-seven thousand visitors, Eastern Kentucky, an economic impact of thirty-eight point nine million dollars. This year, we're way over a hundred and fifty thousand visitors and our projection after we get a report done is over a hundred million dollars. Um, I care about our region and how we do that is real simple. Something Evers does have, and all our little co-communities have. I need you to repeat three things after me. To make a successful tourism entity a destination, three key components you need. You gotta say it after me, though. Heads to bed, food to mouth, lift to sit. If you've got them three things in a welcoming, bright, beautiful community, you have a chance to become a destination experience. And that's gonna be our projection for next year as Evers Kentucky. We already started this year with Slow Hollow. I don't know if anyone's been over lately. Got a new road. It looks good. And that's, that's, that's part of getting the direction to come to Evers. So, one of our main focuses next year is promoting Slow Hollow to Evers Kentucky from Cumberland, Kentucky. So, another destination experience, we do have a mobile application that you can download. With turn-by-turn navigation that works for our cell phone service. The USDA, through a bright-eyed illmind, paid for it to make it happen. We average six thousand downloads a month from that mobile app. That's six thousand potential customers that come to our region and spend their money. And that's how I look at things in life. From that time on, we, of course, expanded, got into the realm of federal grants and going to Washington DC and making federal people learning, reading a lot, understanding procurements and codes and how you can leverage economics for common good for communities, and that's where I'm at now. I was up in Washington DC last week. I'll go real quick over this. Benny Coleman, I was hoping he was gonna be here tonight. Called me about an opportunity, and it's like most people call me, though, they usually want me to come and help figure out how to get a grant for something. Well, in the case, Benny sees what we're doing and offered the high school as an opportunity for something we could potentially do inside Evers. I thought about it, I prayed about it, brought some people down to Evers. I also brought some people from Evers to Cincinnati, Ohio, to look at something that we're, a friend of mine has created, which is the buzz of Cincinnati right now. It's called Four by Three Production. It's the ability to bring free thinkers and creative youth into a region to not only just work there, but live there, and give them the opportunity and the skill set to do movies, editing, film production, all this podcast, NFTs, which I can understand that they make money at it, the metaverse, again, over my head. But these creative thinking kids last year brought over twenty-seven million dollars to that business. Um, and they don't have a dinner belt, like how we're all trained in school. They're entrepreneurs. They come when they wanna work. They come when they feel like it, but they come when, when they wanna do something, and they do their creative expressions through their labor and increase opportunity. It's a totally different mindset than all of us probably has been raised to be, which I find it very intriguing, and I find it very new, but I also find opportunities for that, for this region. And things that we started looking at for people relocating to Evers, Kentucky, all of a sudden, we got, we're ten minute drive from Starbucks. Who would ever thought that, by the way? But, you know, for someone outside of our region, that's a big deal, you know? Um, but anyway, so, of course, I talked to the mayor, we've been doing some research and opportunities. What we can potentially do, it's not just about the high school. This is about the community. We are doing documentary, and its purpose of documentary is more than this, a visual of what we're doing, but I want the community input for not, for many opportunities. Infrastructure, what can we do to help with tourism, jobs, economics? What was the goal, was see, not someone that's looking on the outside saying, this is what we're gonna do. It's not how I do things. Our motto is clear for Backroads of Appalachia. We believe in racing first, or I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm backwards, community first, racing second. We do motorsport events all the time now across Commonwealth Kentucky. But before anything happened, what are you gonna do for the town? If you're not gonna do something for the community, you're not gonna be, we're not gonna do it, and you're not gonna be welcomed back. So, prime example, if you could look up Drift Appalachia, we just raised twenty-seven thousand dollars two weekends ago for the Buckhorn Elementary School for playground equipment. That's community outreach. That's how you get people involved and engaged. And that's what I really care about. But what we're looking for, we pitched an ideal to something called Just Transition Fund. They're the Rockefellers, which has ties to Peabody, by the way. I had to do my research to find that out. But they funded us two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to come up with ten unique opportunities and ideals to go with federal money that includes what we can do with the city, what kind of infrastructure we can request and help put together packages with our engineers, water department, our broadband bead, and also the high school. Um, so, my colleague in this, you all might know of her, her name is Sandy Dunneho. Sandy was a commissioner in the Department of Local Government four years ago. She's also the Appalachia Regional Commissioner. She was the proxy for the state of Kentucky for many years. Very knowledgeable lady that's involved in this. But she has a, something special for Evers Kentucky, and when I told her about this, she jumped on board to be in this for no charge of money, but for her little legacy for something she wants to see done. And I think that means a lot. Um, I'm making no money off of this project. This money of the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is for technical assistance, asset inventory, and putting the right people together to put together plans and packages that will get federal funding. I don't know if you're all familiar with the co-impact community funds that's going around right now. Anybody ever heard of that? So, Eastern Kentucky is ranked number two in the nation, and it's, it's not a great thing, but we can make it great. We're ranked number two as most distressed parts of the United States. The Navajo Nation, the Crow Nation out west is ranked number one. There's two-hundred-and-fifty-six billion dollars that's controlled by multiple entities, federal entities, that will help redevelop with plans and asset inventories and the right keywords that we can help redevelop co-impacted communities. My goal, my vision, is to take the motorsport aspect, still have the tourism part of it, but change it into something a lot more beneficial for a community than just racing or motorcycle traffic or anything like that, is to bring people into our region to appropriate, have babies, the married way and the working kind way, not the, no disrespect to welfare way, but let's re-help repopulate a community with the youth and, you know, try to turn the tide. And if it's successful, I think it's something that we can repeat in multiple counties throughout our region. I'm free for questions, so drill me all you want.
Are you working at the Bridge to Nowhere down here before we get into Pineville? Do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Well, I actually work with David a lot. David's a good man. What they're doing, and of course, City of Pineville is very intelligent. Years ago, it started annexing all the way past that bridge. But we are working on the aspect of helping putting their tourism package together for destination experiences for there. Uh, Bell County, they have already, they're ahead of game when it comes to infrastructure and hotels. However, when the numbers start hitting on that, there's gonna be potential opportunities with an ATV park and what's going on in Evers already for a destination experience. How far is it to the Bridge to Nowhere? Twenty, twenty-two minutes, twenty-five minutes from here? Something like that? So, you know, I don't want this to become a gimmick. I don't want this to become a pigeon-forged destination with, you know, outside investors everywhere and, you know, mountain people doing mountain wage stuff for a rich person don't live there. But what this can become is an arm of that kind of destination that, the thing that I feel when I deal with motorsport tourism is, what's everybody craving, you think? What's the number one thing why people come to Eastern Kentucky? Any idea?
Say adventure tourism.
Mayberry. I could spend ten million dollars in a marketing strategy, and it's word of mouth that brings them back. And it grows every year from word of mouth. They talk about people from the south, which I get the most tickled of, southern hospitality. We thought we had southern hospitality till I ran out of gas and six people stopped and trying to get me gas and help me out. Appalachian hospitality kicks everybody else's rear end. And that's where I feel that's their strongest point, no matter what the country looks at, the mountain region, that's what they call us, by the way, is their, is their grit, and also our hospitality and looking out for one another. And I think that's gonna be a big part of our key component if we can put it together correctly and sell that, so.
And that was the one thing that really pushed Evers forward back ten years ago.
Absolutely.
With the Ridge Runners, it was the hospitality. It was, uh, people would come here from all over the country and.
We had seven hundred and five members in this little town.
I was, I used to be part of it, so.
Uh, they, I mean, they were from California. We had two or three from Spain. So, they, yeah.
I was, I was here for the Guinness Book World Record ATV Parade. I thought that was the coolest thing ever. So, you know, and, you know, one thing I, I have to say, and I, I'm not trying to get in the weeds too deep, so please don't get mad at me when I say this. I observed. That ATV park, for all it's been going on, should be a lot bigger than it is now. You know, um, you gotta go look at Rush ATV Park in Boyd County. They got this much compared to what you all have, but they're doing thirty times the benefit. So, that's the stuff that I like to get more involved in as well. I am a board member of the enemy of the Black Mountain Trail System. I'm part of the Kentucky Motor Recreation Authority. I represent the state of Kentucky in ATV motorsports. Harlan County's not part of that deal. But my goal is not to pick a county, I'm not a high school rival, and it ain't the bull dogging against the yellow jackets here, we're all a region. But my goal is to develop opportunities and use my knowledge and what little knowledge I've got, but my work ethic, and to develop opportunities to increase our region. Uh, Western North Carolina, like I said, I'm up there. They dominated for the past twenty-five years, and four of them. Now, people are gonna be looking to go somewhere else because it's gonna take them ten years to get back on their feet. Prime time right now is the start. And I see that. And our, our welcome center in Lynch, Kentucky's proven that already since the flood. We've increased traffic over four-hundred-and-eight percent. You know, that means people's coming here now instead of going to the tail of the dragon. That's opportunity for our people and our region, so.
I wanna thank you. Welcome me up. I'm a new founding member. I've been, I've covered last year over there, Black Mountain, I've been.
Awesome.
Precedent on the board, boy. And we would love to welcome you up any time. We use them each second, third, Tuesday, Monday.
Awesome.
Um, it's, it's something that, it's always been here near my heart. You know, Preston and my dad have been friends, guys, and they have been.
Yeah.
And I've been away from it for a little bit, just.
Well, I can see your social media's changed in the past few months on what you're all doing.
We're slowly trying to, you know, increase traffic. And they hired their tourism director back in view, and so, we're trying to, you know.
For Evers or for work? Okay. So, that's something I could do to help you as a tourism director. I can connect you with everybody else. I can help you find marketing funds. I can do all that. As a regional tourism, you know, I can make phone calls and help develop projects for you a lot quicker.
Well, I kinda, I stayed away for about ten years, so I kinda got behind the ball on who I was where now. Uh, previously, you know, I knew everybody, but now it's, it's changed so much, and I've taken the spot on recreational trails where I tell you, go up to Frankford couple. It was what, September, the middle of September. And that's been a great networking.
I go Frankford more. I go to my house even more, so.
But we definitely, you know, we're trying to, to get back into the, the tourism thing.
Well, you all really have the package deal, and like I say, with our, our website and our mobile application, anything you want us to put on it, we don't charge for that. That, you know, T-shirt sales at our welcome centers do two key components for me. It pays my payroll for my employees for the year. We shut down in the end of October, first November, but we have enough money saved to make sure my people are not laid off. That's the number one thing for me, what we do. Number two is we utilize our funds to pay for our mobile application and keep it going without going to the cities and counties saying, hey, I need money. You know, um, we're here to assist our cities and counties. I'll go beat up the state all day long for money. That ain't no problem. I go beat the federal government all day long for money because we built the state. And that's what everybody forgets, like, you know, I was part of this Leadership Kentucky now. I don't know who was thinking and led me to put me in this class, but they got an earful from the UK president recently when we broke down Kentucky. Louisville, Lexington, Northern Kentucky, then the Mountain District. Then we talked about our job statistics. We talked about everything, but the thing they forgot to mention was if it wasn't for us and the COSEvers tax, they wanna build a Louisville, they wanna build a Lexington. And the S M mission for me to go down Frankford and make war, you know, is right there. But, um, you know, I really believe that with this project and the right people, I really, truly believe in my heart that we will make a huge difference. We have the USDA coming with AML on August, or October thirtieth to view and tour Evers, Kentucky with me. Um, you know, not again, it's more than a high school. I plan on doing a community meeting. I was gonna ask you all, were you recommended to do it, invite the community? And one thing I can do is, you know, invite the community and get more community buy-in, not handouts, so please never get me as that handout guy. But I would love to be able to make sure that our community has turkeys and fixins for Thanksgiving and do a pre-Thanksgiving. That way, your community come out and give a free turkey. And a lot of people came before turkeys, thanks. And, uh, you know, but I never wanna be that guy, but I wanna always be able to have the ability to help. And prime example, I've got mud under my fingernails right now from North Carolina, you know? God's been good to me, and I believe I'm giving back, so I'm gonna live a good life. So, but, um, what other questions you all have for me?
What extent you interested in the high school up there?
As far as the whole high school?
Yeah, yeah.
So, right now, um, we have University of Louisville in conversations with us right now for a small campus. It's not a dental clinic, uh, it's Engineering School of Speed. I am in talks with Toyota Sports Cars of America, which is Lance Smith. He owns the American Rally Association and also Super, Super Motorsports of America. Lance is building Toyota Sports Cars of America, and he cannot, over a non-compete, you can't be in the same shop, can't be in the same factory. So, Toyota's headquartered work. Makes a lot of sense coming to Kentucky. And you, you don't wanna put it in Lexington or Louisville because they're rally cars. We need grounds to test a rally car when they develop and build them. So, we'll work on that aspect. Of course, Four by Three Production. I'm also, um, getting the Rosie Rose of Puerto Rico. Uh, working with a corporation that does renewable energies. Without selling all my thunder, I got, I had a brain idea a few years ago. How do you make hydrogen and aviation fuel out of Kudzie? And I think there's a potential market for that, and they're doing some research and development right now on that potential possibility that can be headquartered inside Evers, Kentucky. So, that's what I'm into so far, and if you've got any more ideals, I'll go research and figure it out.
We'll bring some of it.
Yes, sir. It's quite a lot to hear.
We'll get some.
It's more than me, and that's what I'm saying, or more than our team. That's, I want ideals.
You do an emphasis put on, uh, horseback riding and stuff like this, or emphasis for that.
We can, yep. We can do that, and like I do with the hikers and, you know, the bicycles. Backroads always started with motorsport tourism, not power sport. So, you got, power sports is your trail systems. We don't focus on that. We focus on street legal vehicles, either on dirt, national forest land, or asphalt, or what we call tarmac, to bring in that. We're a proud member of the SEMA and the PRI, sixty-eight billion dollar industry in Southern United States of Motorsports. There's Benny, you're late. They've been hammering on, they've been looking for you.
Somebody's gotta work.
I understand that. But Benny, uh, you know, like I said, Benny, you know, this is part of the alumni, this is part of everything involved, but again, we're going further than the school. I'm about the whole city and community of Evers and extended out. But I really believe that with the right plans, which we are putting together, and I'll gladly come and give updates, email updates where we're at. But, um, you know, Benny, Benny's a prime example. He can tell you who's been here already to Evers doing course. Um, but he also has been with me. I took him to Cincinnati, Ohio to see the production, the hundred-and-fifty thousand square foot production facility that was not given no federal money, no handouts to develop. A bunch of young kids did it on their own, and they made it very successful. What if we can inject it with the federal funds that comes in to put us years ahead of what it took them to get up and established in Cincinnati, Ohio? That's how I look at making federal funds. I also look at federal funds, I don't chase grants, never will. How can we make it sustainable if we're funded? How can we keep the LIS on and we can keep it up and pay our fair share of market value with what we do? If we can't make it sustainable, I'm not gonna do it, you know, because I'm not, again, I don't, I don't believe in the word handout. So, um, that's really our, our infrastructure, our focus, our emphasis is on the ability to do these things, but at the same time, make it a sustainable factor and not a burden on the city or county to keep up.
Yeah, I think what, where you see the city, uh, gained in all this is the more successful Backroads Appalachia is in Evers, the more the states will to help us with, I know the word infrastructure's been thrown around, but for us, infrastructure is water, sewer, sanitation, uh, business opportunities for our people.
Yep.
So, you know, more success, and we have what they're looking for, and for some reason, the state likes us in Evers. They really do like Evers.
Yep.
And I think the reason they like Evers so much, that, Derek, is a lot of the people that he's dealt with have been to Evers. They've been on the ATV park, uh, years ago, and it's just a special place to them.
Yep.
When they got treated.
We are the first ones. So, you can't make that away from me.
For us, the big opportunity for him is us working as a team is gonna be for the fact that, you know, the state's gonna help us with some of our alien issues with our aging infrastructure in Evers.
Yep.
So, uh, between that and the tax base, it's, it's gonna be really advantageous for us to, to be able to work together.
And, and the prime thing is, you know, before you can count these creative ideals and start luring people, the infrastructure needs to be updated. And done it.
Was the state pleased with the way that your, your company come in and swallowed up the motorized sports, the little race cars, what I call them, that come through their hundred-ninety mile air?
Economic, the economic development cabinet is, tourism is, uh, we've had some battles throughout. But, you know, the bottom line is, is our economic impact report. Um, reason why you talked about the hundred-ninety mile air thing, I never approved nothing, and we tell everybody, follow the law. If you don't, if you break the law, I'll be the first one to go and laugh at you while you're in jail. You know, so we, we try to be good stewards of that. But what we've done now to be able to combat against that is House Bill Twenty-Nine. We can legally now, with, through the state of Kentucky and our state highways, we can legally shut down a state highway to do a race event on. So, I, it's no, we don't do nothing illegal at all when it comes to this, but what we can do is Slow Hollow is a prime example. It could become a timed attack destination where one car at a time leaves every minute apart that will start in Cumberland and end in Evers, and then they can stay in this town, we reverse them and send them back the other way. Same thing, we can do it for two days, two days at a time. That's money in both communities. And, you know, the road to be closed, we'll designate areas, we'll have our safety, we'll be paying our firemen and our police to be there. We have insurance, performance bonds, all the traffic control signs, and that's what we really focus on. And West Virginia allowed me to do that first, which I had to prove the, prove a concept, become the Kentucky, go to legislators, and say, hey, this is working and we're missing out. But that is, again, all this, the economics of it is a wonderful thing. But this is a catalyst for me to find corporations, people that wants to, that comes for the first time to Eastern Kentucky, that kinda likes it or falls in love with it. Well, now I can go to Secretary of Economic Development, Mr. Noel, and say, I got this company, they're looking for this kind of land, looking for this kind of building. What kind of tax incentives can the state offer them for them to lure here to create jobs and opportunity? And that's happened, uh, this week. We had a team, a rally race team from Argentina that's gotta use a phone to talk to me. The trans, they talk through a phone, translates, they landed in Atlantic Kentucky. So, they, they're, they got a five thousand square foot garage, they're a small rally team, but still, they came to Kentucky. From Argentina, that is a win for our people. They're gonna hire five people in Eastern Kentucky to work for them. So, that's the stuff that I focus on, and the rally cars and all that's just my shiny lure. They get them here to see who's what and who's got opportunities, and do my research and give them a call and say, hey, let's have a real conversation. And that's what, it's worked pretty well so far. But Benny was hanging out with a motorsport legend up here about two months ago, wasn't he? So, we had a Lance Smith, the Hill Super Motorsports of America, he flew in and wanted a tour of Lynch, and also Evers. Lynch, he said, there's one road. Evers, he said, oh my God, I love this place, you know, and, uh, don't put that on Lynch, I'll give you trouble. But, uh, you know, there is potential, but I really believe what we can do in, in a partnership is, you know, for the city is the infrastructure. I think we can help push a lot of different projects through, so I need ideals. Um, we can work with AML, uh, we've already had a lot of conversations with AML. ARC, Kidful USDA, and we can help with the project, put it together for you, and, uh, you know, of course, it'll be your all's grant, not mine. I don't wanna handle your money, but we can help put these projects together, and we've got a pretty good grant team, uh, that works very well with us to help put these projects together.
Eric is working with some very serious people that mend Evers, to look at the town, the school. There's, that's, that's just like you was speaking, the Vermont Rally Sports Cars. You can Google it up, it's amazing garages that they have for repairing and building of these race cars. Whether they're raced here or not, they can be built here. It's a high-tech college vocational school. It's basically just to make a summation of it. But they're, they're for real, guys. I know the, the community, the city, we've tried a lot of projects, but this is the one that, that I have my lifetime seen that, that it, it's gonna, it gonna be a game changer for, uh, Cloverfork and, if not the whole county.
Yep. And that's one thing as well, is that I did go to the University of Louisville on behalf of Evers, Kentucky, on behalf of. On behalf of our account. I believe in, in a good university of the background, um, that thinks a different way than what we've always thought of Eastern Kentucky. You know, um, UK world, which I hope there's all alumni that's in here for that, I'll get in trouble. You know, I've seen what UK has done to our people for thirty years, you know? If we can bring and lure uh, the speed of engineering school to Everest, Kentucky. And we can come up with different pathways, let's go bring young engineers in here. Freethinkers that has potential and opportunity to do, do great things, not just for our region, but for their country. And uh, if I, I encourage anyone to go look at the speed engineering school or at School of Engineering at Louisville. It's phenomenal what these young people are able to produce and come up with. And if we can get them to put a small campus here, which is, you know, we're working on an endowment right now to make that happen. Um, I think it can really be, it can just change the world for us. So one last thing, our mission is three key components, kind of where we stay in our lane. Economic development through motorsports is the number one mission. That's what I focus on until Everest, Kentucky comes in. Uh, it's always been before. Number two is we do have a workforce and recovery program. Uh, we are actually starting a ten, ten episode TV show where Everest, Kentucky will be in episode one. Where we'll be on Amazon Prime, Netflix and Tubi. Uh, we're going to use people in recovery and teach them how to become editors and producers for TV networks. I believe in our recovery program and that's a big selling point when I bring any corporation into Eastern Kentucky. Well, what about your people and your workforce? We really don't have one no more. I love our youth lab. But we do have a recovery programs all across this, our Eastern Kentucky area that we can train and give people a second chance to do great things. You just got to give them that and not pay them that mountain wage. And that's my focus is to get off the mountain wage. So, and our third thing is we support all local businesses. Uh, if it's a local thing, any way I can do to help a local business, we're going to try to help it one way or the other. Either it's helping write a grant, get a small SBDC kind of program. Or me sending a hundred and fifty rally cars and bombard them for a day, just to make sure they get a month's paycheck, you know, for that day, then hold them through for winter. I'm all about that. So. Any more questions for Eric?
Eric, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you. I will keep you up a monthly report if that's okay, Mayor, where you can just return and if you ever want me to come back.
You want to send me a monthly report, I'll, I'll reach the council every month to meet.
Absolutely.
Know where we are.
Yup.
I, I hope everybody's as excited about this as I am. I think that uh, I think this is our opportunity, Benny said right.
Exactly.
It's our opportunity.
Try it, try it.
And thi- this is right up Everest's alley. I mean, this is what we've cut our teeth on for the last twenty years. So this is what we're good at. And those hospitality and, and motorsports. Those two things together.
Thank you so much. And I hate to be rude and crude if I ain't got nothing else, I got a six and a half bird right in Beducah, Kentucky. So. Boy, you don't mind, grab that for us unless uh, leave them all alone.
Y'all have any other questions for me or through to Eric, just, you know, contacting?
Uh, October thirtieth, USDA and AML be here. They got the SOAR summit, that's why none of them came today, they're all preparing for the SOAR summit tomorrow.
So they are, they are still on, on, and that's, that'll be some major benefits for us. But think of the, think of the school as, you know, their housing and be doing these projects. And this will be bringing in professionals as well, taking this training and they'll, they'll be housed here for three and six months too, while they're taking this training. But it's, it'll be outside money, but you know, coming in, it'll be very beneficial to us.
And the last thing is I encourage you to look up in Washington DC on your phone or your computer, I came with the, I didn't, I stowed the idea, I didn't come up with it. It's on the war. They have a little old camper and the fire pit and this is, it's the central location of that where they give out smores. People sit around the fireplace at night and do smores. It's the coolest vibe I've ever seen and inside of Washington DC, why in the world can't we do it for our community here?
We already done, we've done a campground.
Yeah, I'm talking about nightly though, you have it nightly. And uh, I said, man, what ideal, what we could do there. So we already applied for that grant. We also applied for another grant. So you're aware already for you and for you all. Is to revitalize your smallest street in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, by the way. So that's, that's something I applied for last week. I think that you, we can do a re- a small revitalization grant where we can get those uh, promote that, come visit those, the, the state's smallest street. Yeah, so I think that's pretty awesome. Benny told me that and I started doing research on it, you know, but uh, it's, it's gimmicks, it's niches, it's how you get people to come. Cool.
Give them a reason to come.
Holler at me. I do want to talk to you about water. So I'm out of chips, I think. Appreciate you.
I got one more.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Eric.
Eric, you, you, you going on out and save me? You want, you didn't say me on anything else?
Okay.
I love you.
All right, be careful.
All right, well, I want everybody to meet Eric because I, I think his uh, I think what their proposal is uh, very exciting news for us, you know, we've not had anything come through this exciting and wild and I think, I think the same thing I said, I think we've already got the, the building blocks here that they need to succeed and by having people like Sandy Dutton on our side, that means a lot for us here in Everest. So maybe, maybe it'd be exciting news for us to come in the future to, for some of our businesses and, and our infrastructure. Make it a whole lot easier. If we've got more here to offer than just voters, then you know, that'll make it a whole lot easier for them to help us with the water tank projects, water plant projects, sewer projects, revitalization projects. Uh, you've got to have those things coming in before the state wants to turn money around.
And they wanted us to think outside the box. I mean, just, not just think of a single project, but a, a total several millions of dollars of project. If, there was a survey that we, that went around during the school time there that, for people to put input into. But I know a lot of times we think of, we think of just doing something, a, a street repair or something. Which that's, the meetings I've been involved with, that's all part of it and that's all good, that, because that's what we're used to thinking. We'll go after one project and, and then that's it, you know, until we wait till another. But they're, they're very serious. These are some major players and they, they want to put Everest back on the map again, is the way they indicated that they need. And like I say, with USDA coming in and you know, that, they're serious, so they wouldn't even be coming to the, to the meeting, I mean, coming up to beauty town. They be, you'll see Cameron Cruz going through and uh, they're using it as a promotion, a building thing. Some, some of the things at, at the school that would be, uh, you may see where this EKME, that uh, program that's going on in, in other parts of Eastern Kentucky. That's uh, that's some of the recovery portion, but the way they extrapolate, maybe going after young people to come in, but to retain our young people. So they don't have to leave and that's bringing in, you know, we think of the movie production people that he spoke about uh, in Cincinnati. The uh, it's uh, four, four by three production. They're, they're a major, they do poker and gambles uh, advertisements and old spies and just they're and they, they love it here, they were looking. So it's, it's going to be about three or four different instances up there as well as the racing and housing law.
And I think we need to, city, the city leaders, I think we need to give this project our full support.
Thank you.
To be able to try to get, you know, get this off. This is, it's our opportunity. You know, we don't have a lot of opportunities coming our way and we need it, we've got to, we've got to take it. We need to, we need to be very supportive and, and do anything we can to help this out. Of course, some of us, Mayor, may not, the motorsport industry and some of us, as Preston's saying over the years. You know, thi- this is a money maker. Uh, ten years ago, this was a money maker for Everest. I do agree with Eric. You know, we kind of fallen behind where we could be at some levels, but I think the good part, just the tourism aspect, so. You know, I think this is something we, we will give off those people and I, I think all of us are in agreement with that. All right, we're going to move on to track the business out of the way real quick, so uh, first thing I have on our uh, probably will not have a financial support. Troy's not here, so we're going to let Kristy bring the financial support real quick.
You're right. City of Everest, uh, checking account balances for September. I'm just going to go over the deal. We will, we go on this last month, so I'm going to duplicate that. For the general fund, we ended the month at eleven thousand eight dollars and forty-six cent. Co-senior's one thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-four cent. Fire department, eleven thousand one hundred eight dollars thirty-two cent. Police drug account, two hundred nine dollars and fifty-two cents. The street, street fund, ten thousand one hundred eight dollars thirty-six cent. Recreation fund, one thousand one hundred fourteen dollars sixty-seven cent. Uh, the county garbage fund is twelve thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cent. Pops for kids fund, ten hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cent. Tourism fund, twenty-three thousand eight hundred two dollars and sixteen cents. Sanitation fund, five thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cent. Sewer operations, nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cent. Appreciation reserve, fifty dollars. The water operations account, thirty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and forty cent. American Relief Plan Act, twenty-four thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and forty cent. The USDA bond account, seven thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-eight cent. The water deposit fund, uh, one hundred and four thousand three hundred twenty-seven thousand thirty-five cent. Uh, the water KIA fund is one hundred dollars and the water sewer sanitation credit card account where people pay online has seven hundred seventy-five dollars. And the question is, have vouchers? Moving on. Um, the statements for the general fund in September, the property taxes brought in, uh, seven hundred fifty dollars and twenty-eight cent. That's kind of winding down for the year. Your total revenue for the month was twenty-seven thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-one cent. Total expenditures for the month, thirty-seven thousand six, four hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-one cent. And your total uh, net operating revenue was a deficit of nine thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and ten cent. Handout is listed checks for the month of September. If you have any questions, just let me know. We'll look that over, we'll move on to sanitation fund. Our revenue for the month of September on the sanitation was ten thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and fourteen cent. Total expenditures, ten thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cent. With a total revenue of one hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cent and your checks are following that page. Next we have our sewer fund. You have a total revenue of twelve thousand six hundred ninety dollars and forty-six cents. Total expenditures was five thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-two cent. And you have net revenue of six thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-four cent for the month. Following days are checks for the month of September in the sewer department. And last we have the water department. We have a total revenue of forty-six thousand two hundred twelve dollars and fifty cent. Total expenditures was sixty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eleven cent. With your total revenue of a deficit of twenty thousand seven hundred ten dollars and sixty-one cent and you have your checks following that. If you guys got any questions over there.
Could you everybody just come in and look over the uh, all the checks and the, and the finances for last month? If you have any questions, please ask.
What's that time out? I'll get, uh, grab it.
Yeah, that's a lot for me up here.
I might motion shift, look, this report.
Already made a motion, sent the report, Jackie seconds, everybody in favor of the report? Everybody's in favor. If you have any questions, you know, any time during the meeting or after the meeting, if you have any questions, if anything's been done, just pitch it to us. Next, we're going to move on to the minutes. Kristy wants to raise the minutes.
The city of Everest City Council meeting for Tuesday, September seventeenth, minutes. President Mayor Andy Manning, Jason Salmer, Carl, Preston Clay, Larry Lutter, and Jake Remprow, meeting is called order. Finance report is ready. Jason makes a motion to accept the report. Larry seconds and all present agree. Minutes from the August twentieth meeting already. Larry makes a motion to accept the minutes. Jake seconds, all present agree. Minutes from the August twenty-seventh meeting already. Larry makes a motion to accept the minutes. Jake seconds, all present agree. B J's president gives the report. Jason makes a motion to accept the report. Preston seconds and all present agree. Matt with Floyd and Associates is present to go over the twenty twenty-three audit. Jackie makes a motion to accept the audit. Larry seconds and all present agree. Uh, Woody is present to give the water report. In reports, we went down from fifty-four percent in August to twenty-six percent loss in September. And we're pumping, we were pumping six hundred fifty thousand gallons a day and now we're down to four hundred fifty thousand gallons per day. Ernie makes a motion to accept the water report. Larry seconds and all present agree. Water and sewer rates were discussed. Larry makes a motion to accept the thirty percent increase on the water rates and the first reading of the ordinance. Preston seconds and all present agree. Jason makes a motion to accept the thirty percent increase on the sewer rates and accept the first reading of the ordinance. Larry seconds and all present agree. No police report. Danny is at in-service. Uh, fire report is given. Ernie makes a motion to accept the fire report. Jason seconds, all present agree. New council member is discussed. Ernie makes a motion to, for Charlie Couch to fill the seat. Larry seconds and all present agree. Jason makes a motion to adjourn and Larry seconds and all present agree.
Okay. They get a motion to accept the minutes. Larry made a motion to accept the minutes. Charlie seconds, is everybody good with that set of minutes? All right. We're going to pass these around, let y'all sign while we do a second sit.
City of Everest Special College City Council meeting for Monday, September twenty-third, will be in the four minutes. President Mayor Andy Manning, Charlie Couch, Ernie Lutter, Jake Remprow, Larry Hall, Andy and Jason Salmer, meeting is called order. The water rate ordinance is ready. Jason makes a motion to accept the second rating of the ordinance. Larry seconds, all present agree. The sewer rate ordinance is ready. Jason makes a motion to accept the second rating of the ordinance. And Ernie seconds, all present agree. Jason makes a motion to adjourn and Jake seconds, all present agree.
Okay. They get a motion to accept those minutes.
So many.
Preston made a motion, Jackie second. Is anybody in favor of those? Kind of to pass them around to him and let him go ahead and be signed, we'll move right on. While you guys are signing those and uh, we'll have our attorneys report with Attorney Director, Mr. P J P.
Don't have a lot for tonight, so coming up this Saturday from eight to twelve is our uh, fall harvest festival and pumpkin patch. Um, time's up, twelve day, had the numbers back.
That's short.
I can't even, but uh, if Peyton ain't here, I can't get nothing straight.
Right.
Yeah, it's from twelve to eight. We are going to have music, um, I think starting at three, well, we only have, but three till six. Yeah, um, we've got a train, we've got uh, hayride, we've got pumpkins, we've got mums. We just unloaded almost a hundred and fifty mums this evening in the rain. It was wonderful. Um, so we're going to have those for sale, fifteen dollars. Um, and I think pumpkins are five and ten. We have a truckload. They're absolutely beautiful. We bought these off of Sally Gapp Farms in Williamsburg. They do a wonderful job. Guy is just a super good guy, um, offered to help anyway, could, gave us a bunch of extra stuff. Uh, really good people and they're beautiful, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout for our event. Um, we'd love for everybody to come over and, you know, check us out. We've got a bunch of food vendors, a bunch of regular vendors. Like I said, we've got games all day long, pie eating contest, uh, costume contest. Got music, we've got uh, axe throwing, everything in the world is there, um, Saturday and we're really, really excited about it. Tourism's worked hard to get this, uh, to be done, so y'all definitely come out and support us. If you're only as good as the people around you, if you guys don't come, there's no reason for us to do it.
We got axe throwing.
Yeah, it's a big old inflatable thing, you know, where the axe that. Yeah, it's uh, something that one of them, it's kind of fun. We did try to get one of the actual mobile axe throwing, the real mobile axe throwing.
Is that growing pretty fast?
Oh yeah, huge. And now they've got mobile.
I see a lot of places in the electrician come in, have three drinks and bring the axe and kill somebody. I ain't drinking no more.
But yeah, it's, I mean, I'll bring it in our direction. Uh, in November, uh, we're tentatively looking at November thirtieth for a little event before our Christmas stuff, Christmas season started off. Kind of like to talk to you guys about it a little bit more and talk to them later. Uh, kind of like to talk to you guys about it a little bit more and talk to them later, uh, playing, putting on a little tree, doing a tree lighting ceremony. Um, and then, of course, uh, first weekend, first Sunday, we send you to their, uh, Christmas parade. And then after that, a little bit of a, a break to get your breath until springtime. Um, and once again, all tourism members, you know, the job, everybody is just great, they're all working together. Uh, they still want to see this go forward, and so far, we've had no problems with anything. It's all worked out really well. Uh, looking forward to seeing what the back roads have left us in probably through the year. That's definitely something that we've talked about at our board meetings with the parks. It just kind of got complacent for a little while. And, you know, people didn't stop attending the parks, we just kind of stopped attracting people and creating new things for them to do. And it's not necessarily new things, but just having events. You know, you can schedule it right all you want, but to have an event and actually do things with people means the world. And I, as I was talking to the Sally Yip guy today, he, he's saying the same thing about his pumpkin patch. It doesn't matter if it's five or ten people, but if you have something for people to do, people will be there. And five people turns into ten, turns into five hundred, as long as they have a good time and it's safe and, and down the fairway. And that's what we're trying to do going forward. Dallas and all the people on the park boarders are being great too. We've just been kind of behind the eight ball a little bit, you know, catching up the speed from where it'd been, so. And we're getting there. Um, it's, there's a great effort all the way around, and I'm looking forward to it, so. If y'all have anything for me, you're more than welcome to ask, and I'll do anything you can do.
I do have an idea, I want to call you about more of a.
Yeah, sure.
I think it, uh, it coincides with the tree lighting stuff, too. I'll call you tomorrow for that.
I would like to add something too, to the, to what the gentleman that was here speaking earlier about the gimmicks. I mean, it really is, that's what it's about. Uh, for instance, my wife always wanted an authentic Philadelphia cheesesteak. We went up to Philadelphia on our tenth year anniversary, drove her up there, thinking we was going to get this great sandwich. There's two of them that's world famous, world famous, they have pictures of every celebrity that's ever known. Uh, Geno's and Pat's, and one of them's right across the street from the other. And we can get a better sandwich down here at Dairy Hut by far. Uh, the sandwiches are garbage, but everybody goes because it's a gimmick. Uh, so I, I think that's not necessarily just to give them something that's, that's garbage, but if we could get a gimmick, just like he said, if you could do like a, you know, world's largest s- s'mores pit, all, you know, I consumed it one time, or something crazy, just to get people say, oh, this is where they done that. Uh, so I, I think, I think that was, that was something that was well said, that could really, uh, we could maybe open up our minds and try to think of something, and especially with, you know, the fall foliage and stuff, because we've got people that would come, just look, just look at that, that kind of thing. Uh, but, but I, I thought that was a really good idea, and that would make a lot of sense, just have something, hey, this is where that happened, I'm going to visit that.
It's unreal. We've been looked up, every campsite we have, every hotel around here, all, everybody's rental properties have been looked since the last year for fall crop. And it's literally not an event. It's, uh, I mean, it's, it's a ride. People just show up and ride all alone, there's nothing planned, there's no structures, they're like, they just love coming. Any kind of little gimmicks that go on, it works. People love coming. Now, they aren't going to come here every day, but they're going to come here when they can. And that's what I keep telling park board, you know, the other places are not a threat to us. Let them go and enjoy that as well, there's nothing wrong with that.
There's nothing matter, go around.
Spend their time here. And when we get them here, we want to make it the best time that we can make it. And I hope that with all the ideas going around, that we can actually capture on that, because it works.
I always thought we should promote the Battle of Ebert, I always thought that was something that we missed the board on. People drive all over state to do tourism and look at state markers, and we've got one of the most famous battles we've fought. Uh, and we've never been able to promote it. So, we looked into that a few years back and never really got that far, but now that this is going on, and that's another thing we can, you know, try to look at. You know, those are things that they look more at, we've got more tourism.
Yeah. Well, that might not have been a big national battle, probably, but we've had some of the hardest work in the world, of course, people in the world that came out of this hub. And like he said, a lot of the, the world's resources that they use now, or the funding, has come from this area right here, and we have a lot of history that people love to learn about. We met some people, uh, a few months ago that were just over at the Crane Depot looking around and started talking to them, and, and they've been back, they've added us on Facebook, they liked our stuff, they sent some vendors. I mean, it, it, just like the guy that we had come up a couple of months ago for the, the barbecue competitions. He's brought a couple of his friends, like, they're, now they're vendors at all of our events. That's outside money that's coming into, that's tourism, that's what we're supposed to be promoting. But we also like to get our community involved as well, because that's what they, they care about the most. And you know that, Chris, and everybody that said we came here. It's not the, I mean, the mountains are beautiful, but it's not necessarily the mountains and all the people. And they love it here.
Does anybody got anything you want to ask me, Jack? If not, can I get a motion to accept tourism report? Or you made the motion, or you said, anybody good with that?
Okay.
I'll be fine. Thank you, sir. All right, next, we're going to move on to the other water report.
Um, you, the numbers this month, it's came up just a little bit, but I think that was, uh, we had several leaks that were fixed along with there being more days this, uh, reading than there was the last, last reading when we got such low numbers. I think there was five more days on this month's usage, which would equate for that, that number to be off just a little bit, so, so that'll level out, uh, again next month, I'm sure. Uh, really no, no news as far as every, everything's still going the way it was going last, last month, last meeting. Uh, still just kindly waiting for, uh, paperwork to move through the state on the tank project. And that's probably going to be more like a, probably January, February, springtime thing. Uh, and it's not of any fault of anybody else, just kindly waiting for them to get their ducks in a row and approve it. There's a sixty to ninety day waiting period just for them to look over the project. So, you're looking at a three-month period that it could take for them to just say, yes, we approve this project. So, even though the money's there, it's just going through all the different, uh, avenues it's got to go through before money finally hits our hands, so, uh, so that we can do those projects, so. Um, that's kind of where we're at on that, kind of just waiting on the state, everything's been done, submitted, we're just kindly at their mercy now. Uh, but everything's still going just as well as it was last month. Uh, still, still not pumping anything out of the river, not having to, got excess water with just the wells and the mine source, so, so things is looking up still as far as that goes. And, uh, nothing really new, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Did you check that out up on South Branch?
Uh, they came in, uh, yes, uh, they did come in, I, I'm glad you mentioned that, thank you, Jack. Uh, they came in from the Division of Water, and we were mistaken on where the mine opening was. We thought it was way further up on the mountain than what it is. So, we're going to have to come way back down. Um, it's actually around the tank, and we was way above, we thought it was coming from way above, uh, the tank up there, but it, it wasn't. So, they're going to come back in and do another, uh, survey and get some samples. They just kindly aborted the mission, but they came ill-prepared, and they had some equipment that they brought that were tore up on them. Uh, so they're going to bring some other stuff in and get some, uh, samples and see what kind of water's coming out of there. And now that we know who owns the property, we can get some easements and things, so that they know what we're doing, and we're not up there doing anything other than just getting a few samples. Uh, so, so that is something that they're going to come back and do, and they're going to do that after the leaves fall, so everything's easier to see and get to. And, uh, so I think they said they want to come back maybe sometime in November. Maybe the last of this month. To see if that is a viable source and to kindly gauge and put a, uh, some kind of meter that they got to see how many gallons per minute's coming out of it. And the reason they want to do that in the next month or two is because it's probably as dry as it's ever been, probably as dry as it would ever be in the course of a year. So, if they can get a reading what's going on now, we would know what, at least it would do, uh, so we'd know how much it would help us throughout the year.
Yeah, because if they wait to January or February, that's when the mines pick up.
And pick up, yeah.
October, September, October, and November's when it's the driest.
And, and give us a, a worst-case scenario, which is where you really want to start at when you're looking at that kind of thing.
How long's that property been?
Um, I can't remember, uh.
That property was right there, you know, uh, you all probably knew Bill Price's dad.
Price, that was a Price thing, I mentioned, yes.
Their dad that lived up in South Branch. They thought it was up higher, but actually, it's a little lower.
Yeah.
They, the old coal haul road went right through their front yard.
Mm-hmm.
So, that mine's just right above their house, right below our tank, South Branch. So, and you all probably know the Price's that lived up there, right, right close to there where they live. Make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Already made the motion, Larry seconds, everybody good with the water report?
Yeah.
I'll in favor of the water. We can move along, this is good. Next.
Apologize, I didn't. I've developed a fucking headache, so if I stumble on my words or whatever, overlook it. Uh, total of nine, nine case reports. Four of those were the drug related, two theft, and three collisions. Two motor assistance, sixteen complaints, four agency assists, uni-traffic stops, eight arrests, uh, three hundred and forty-eight hours of, uh, nine hours. The additional notes, uh, I've provided you guys a copy of the Kentucky Lika City's, uh, audit. Has everyone got one of those?
Yeah.
Also, we hired, uh, C.J. Reed as a part-time officer to be helping out on the weekends for whenever we have events and things. Uh, he'll be mainly working nights on the weekends.
Who is he?
Who was it?
Who is he?
CJ?
Yeah.
He come from the county, he used to work at the county. He works in the mines now, and, uh, he'll be working, uh, he has Friday through Sunday off, and he'll be, uh, helping us out on the weekends.
Y'all remember Clarence Reed? Used to wear his RC, he lived in Co- it's a great song, I was telling him. CJ's a good kid. Only been doing this for a while.
He's already academy trained in everything as well, so he's a, makes life easy. Also, uh, two more, uh, drug trafficking arrests. Derek Kendall was through our drug program. Uh, he was, uh, arrested for trafficking meth, and, uh, we also busted him for, uh, penal assault previous, uh, months. Uh, the other one was, uh, Scott Skolton. Brian actually trafficked this one through our drug program, this is a traffic stop by Brian, uh, in which led to a seizure of twenty-six grams of meth. It's a pretty sizable, uh, seizure for a traffic stop. Uh, Scott had warrants for his arrest, and, uh, during that process, Brian recovered twenty-six grams of meth.
Good job, boss.
No questions?
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate y'all's hard work. Anytime you can get that much meth off the street.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's, it's a good place.
It's a real good place. Thanks to Brian.
I already have. Come around the corner for a bite, big smile.
Anybody got any questions for Chief Jones or Assistant Chief Baker?
Make the motion to accept the police report.
All right, already made the motion, accept the police report. Charlie seconds, everybody good with police report? Thank you, sir. Appreciate the hard work. All right. This is good, this is good. Next, we're going to have, please don't let the fire.
Had four runs this month. One false alarm, one vehicle fire, both outside the city. Had two medical calls, one's inside the city and one outside the city. That's where we end on the calls. Uh, we will be giving out candy for Halloween.
Are you going to do that at your news station or up here? Because you know everybody's going to take you up here.
Yeah, probably do it here, because I ain't, ain't nobody do it over that way.
You say something about last month, you were saying some situation with sewer.
Especially y'all need anymore, and probably always.
Asking about.
Yeah, they'll show a tape, give you a shoe on the floor.
He was using a lot of sewer.
Yeah, he's talking about the project where we, you talked to him about, we had some problems down the plant.
Our line, yeah.
Yeah, and you guys had, all, I know this is not the power report, but I'll just entertain you. The council had agreed to spend the rest of that American relief fund, that money on the sewer. So, I think what me and Clinton was talking about, and Christie.
I know you were.
Is went ahead and spent that money, instead of buying pumps, since we got the project on board to put in pumps, we're going to take that money and fix the plant down there. It's about a twenty thousand dollar repair.
Yeah, eighteen, twenty.
So, we're out there, we've got twenty.
Start in the morning.
Yeah, we've got twenty-four thousand left, you guys are going to, okay, that's the spending on sewer?
I recall that.
So, we, so we decided, instead of pumps, we thought that was the best place to spend this money.
We did buy pumps too.
Because we did, and we were going to borrow them, and so.
We did buy pumps.
We bought sewer, yeah.
Where is it physically, pull it up at, that bridge?
Yeah, it's a pump station.
It's that, oh, behind, over behind that, not the top, okay, okay. And that's a hell of a lot.
I just recall it was something that you were, you was talking.
Yeah, it's inside the plant there, and the plant is there.
Yeah. But Dave, we've got that under control, we appreciate y'all letting us use that money for sewer. I know we'd spend a lot of that, most of that money would spend on water. Uh, so we knew the sewer needed a little love, so, once he got the pumps he got, and we had a little more left over, and y'all agreed to spend on sewer. We decided that was probably the best place for that money to go, that way we wouldn't have to borrow it and come up with it, so. So, that worked out good. Make a motion.
All right. Already made the motion, Jackie seconds, everybody good with the fire?
Yeah.
Great, okay. Uh, next, we're going to move to the old business.
Um, Mike needs to go ahead because we've got things to do.
Okay.
We've got resolutions. Go ahead, Mike.
So, uh, we got the, I spoke to, uh, the director of KIA, actually at a UK football game, I tracked her down, and she sent the grant funding. So, we have two grants, for the two point six million, we've got, uh, one point four for the tank, and we've got one point two million for the water loss project, which would include repairing leaks and stuff in the tank. So, we have a resolution to accept that grant and, uh, to start the paperwork to turn it into KIA. So, what she said, uh, Mayor, I talked to her about, you know, contingency money and how we was going to spend it. And she said what she was going to do was she was going to send down, uh, and pay for engineering first, and then after we got the engineering done, she would pay for the construction, and then she would send the money at the end. The rest of it, the way, that's how their program is set up, so. So, it'll be, for the contingency money to be spent, the tank will be built at that point, so. And like Woody said, the Division of Water is taking sixty to ninety days to review things, uh, plants that we send in, and actually, they hired other consultants to review other consultants' plants, which is crazy. But it is what it is, so, uh, probably we'll see groundbreaking on the tank and everything probably March, which is probably when we need to start it anyway, instead of digging it through the winter, so. Uh, that's what we anticipate that.
Any news on the, brings for that money down to get a new backhoe first?
Well, that's what I was saying, she said that the way the governor's office had set it up, that they would pay for everything, and then the contingency money, which is where the backhoe would come out of, would be at the end of the project.
So, we've got to try and get through the winter and, and play with our backhoe.
That part, because, you know, I think we might, we might make that.
So, also on the South Branch Raw Water Source Project, uh, we applied for the Kentucky Waters Grant, so we're working through that. They're going to make a decision by the end of December on that, and then, uh, make recommendations to the legislature in February. Uh, I did talk to RD, uh, USDA is wanting me to do an application also for the same project. Uh, and that's probably going to be the first of November is when they're going to get to it, which probably coincides to when they're coming to visit. So, I'll be doing, finishing up the preliminary engineering report for that and the assessment that identifies all the projects we've been talking about, which kind of coincides with what the earlier conversations were, so. Everything's moving along.
Yeah, you know, we've been really lucky, I didn't say lucky, it's, it's been a lot of work, but, you know, I was talking to the judge a couple of weeks ago, and I said, he complains about the water, and he said, man, which is good, you know.
Real good.
Knock on wood, guys, we not had a water outage since the back storm, so, no, I'm all jinxed. But we, but it's just been a lot of hard work from our, our guys here. But I think everybody's pretty pleased with the fact that we've not had no water issues in the, since, since Jamie worked. Not yet, exactly pleased.
You're, 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 talk is like this, it's, it's March maybe, uh, at the earliest, or?
Yeah, probably by the time, it's, they're taking up to three months to review it, you know, that's putting us at February, and then we bid it. Yeah, probably by the time, it's there's taken up to three months to review it, you know, that's putting us at February and then we bid it. You know, end of February and go to construction thirty days later, so, you know, the middle of March is what we're probably looking at to get started on those.
Start on the tank.
Yeah. Well, we just got the, we, the money, we're approving the money tonight, so.
So a lot of times when you see, when you see the state give money out for grants and stuff, a lot of times they just hand it out, it.
Oh, I know.
It's still uh.
It takes forever.
Still a long time to be able to jump through all the hoops for them.
That's right.
It's what we have to do, so, and that's what we do. So Christie wants to read these two resolutions to him, so we can get the resolutions done, you can approve them, we get them signed and get back to Mike, that way Mike can start.
They're the same, some of them.
They're the same, they just have different grant ID numbers at the top.
I was gonna read.
Yes, you can just read one of them.
Read one.
Can we approve them both?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um resolution of the City of Everts accepting the grant, approving the grant assistance agreement, authorizing the amendment of the City of Everts. Annual budget and authorizing a representative to sign all related documents, whereas the Kentucky General Sealing has appropriated funds for infrastructure projects in House Bill one. Of the twenty twenty-four regulation of the Kentucky General Sealing, whereas the City of Everts Kentucky. Has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements to the grant utility system, whereas the grantee. Desires funding from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for the purpose of acquisition and destruction of the project. And whereas in the order to obtain a grant for the project and administered by the authority, the grantee is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore, being resolved by the governing body of the City of Everts is followed. Section one, the grantee hereby accepts the grant award and approves the agreement between the grantee and the authority to. Provide the necessary funds to the grantee for the project. Section ten, the amendment and any success within the title is hereby designated to be the grantee's authorized official for the project. And is hereby directed and empowered by the grantee to execute the agreement-related documents and agreements. And to override act on behalf of the grantee to effect such grant awards and to engage a qualified project administrator. If the grantee hereby agrees and commits to include by amendment to its annual budget and audit process. The receipts and expenditures of funds subject to the agreement up to and including the date of project closeout. Section four, that this resolution should take effect at the earliest time provided by law, adopted on October the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh yeah, we'll do a motion first to accept grant number, resolution for grant two four KG W one eight.
Seven. All right, so Jackie made a motion, Christie, Christie second, everybody good with that one? All right, and then uh you all seen it, we've got it in the wording and there, the way it's worded, we've got it worded at mayor, it said it.
Yeah, I'm gonna put uh Connor Mayor on that, um.
You know, I know originally we're doing that, so that way if we have any issues with my health, that way.
Yeah.
Somebody else won't delay, won't delay our citizens. And that's the reason we've gotta load up like that, so I hope I'm here for a long time, but if I'm not, we won't have any delays of getting this done for the citizens, so. That's how we gotta load up, so.
Okay, and then we'll do, uh the same one's gonna be grant number two four uh KG W one one eight. Which is the same resolution, same wording.
Yeah.
Need a, um.
Motion for that, consider that. Larry made the motion, now Jackie second, so draw in favor of that, of course. That takes care of those two. Mike, have you got anything else for anybody, sir?
No, sir.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Mayor? No, I appreciate you, sir.
You speak to your buddies.
Yeah, there.
Talk for them.
Yes, sir. Is there any particular, well, next weekend, I guess, is everything's gonna be busy, so.
It'd be wild to produce.
You trying to do it before then or?
After.
After, okay.
Certain time after, after this week.
Okay, that's why I let him know.
After this week.
Yes, sir, I'll let him know.
Ken, you got anything, sir?
Uh update on the sewer, we did get information from uh V L Andersons to finish up the specs. Uh we got that middle of the week before last when I was on fall break with my grandkids. Uh so hopefully we'll be ready to bid that in a couple of weeks.
That sewer project will help us a lot and help us keep our young ones through.
Cleo and I went over the plans this afternoon.
Anybody got anything else on that? Anybody got any questions about the sewer project? It's like we're on the road for it, so it's good, thank you, sir. All right, we're gonna move on to new business, does anybody got anything on new business? The only thing I got in new business would be the fact that, you know, you all seen this mess that we left up until two fifteen. We've been in constant contact, the state, we understand there's bigger fish to fry right now with the storms coming through, so. We've not complained much, we have let them know on numerous occasions that we've got citizens walking in the road up there and somebody's gonna get hit. We gotta kinda make sure we keep, you know, letting them know that, so that way if something does happen, we know we've done our due diligence to try to make it right. But Cleo uh talked a couple of times today to them and I think Bill may, uh Mr. Moore may be looking for a way for. Uh the generals to come help us get that kinda off the sidewalk until they can get up there and clean it. And I was appreciative of cleaning because we reached out to them about them trees, uh they were getting pretty dead right there and we were starting to. Have some citizens that was real concerned about some of them trees falling on cars and some of them up here on two fifteen, right for Henry's. So, you know, when I contacted them, they was great to come help us get those cut down, but since then we've had this storm and they just not be able to come back and clean it up. So, but uh but we're on that, so you all know if you get any complaints, we're, we're still talking daily to them, but trying to get them to clean it, so. But other than that, I, I think that as far as new business, I think the, the project with the high school, I think it could be a uh. It could be a, a, a big win for us as a city, just, just for the simple fact of what it's gonna bring into our businesses. The opportunities that people, more people have to open businesses. Uh we've seen firsthand what tourism uh can bring to the small, the small communities. At one time, you know, you know, we had thirteen, fourteen hundred people there on ATB freight, you couldn't get around Everts, so. Those things has kinda scaled back, but I, I look forward to seeing more money come in and more business opportunities for people. And uh I think that there may be a opportunity to see uh maybe some places that we got dilapidated in the city limits to get. Maybe torn down and picking building houses back and the reason I say that is because these people are gonna be looking for homes in Everts to stay while they're here. They're not looking to rent, they're looking to buy and build. Uh from what, you know, from what I can gather from this, it may be a good little boost to our community and it may be a great boost for our taxes, tax base here in Everts, so. I really want everybody to kinda be behind this and we'll see where it goes in the group.
I'd like to see the community get behind it.
Yeah, and I, I, you're always gonna have your naysayers, but at the end of the day, you know, Everts is never gonna attract a five thousand. Uh square, uh five hundred thousand square foot factory because we just don't have the workforce, we've gotta be able to do what we're able to do. And this is one thing that we do and we do good, so we gotta, you know, work our strengths in Everts as a community. So I, I wanna solid get behind this project and I, I appreciate Mr. Coleman for, for working with him on that.
Comment, I appreciate you listening to Eric Hurd and his presentation, uh we talked earlier, I knew he could explain it a whole lot better than I could and it's. Uh it's, it's a lot of moving parts in it. Uh one of the things is, is the, the bank issue, that's, that's also part of this group with the contacts of. If we're not gonna get a traditional bank, we're gonna get a credit union. That operates exactly the same and usually better rates and checking and everything. So that's, that's a lot less uh regulations, but we'll still, we'll have a bank in, in town. Or, or a banking facility, but again, it, it takes, you know, it's a, everything's, takes the, the red tape, the deadlines to go through. Uh the other thing I want, I'd like to mention, we are getting a new restaurant in town. It, it's, we'll do to open next week, we think, we're, they were trying to get open by this weekend, but it's just not gonna be possible. Uh it's, it's a family that's um out of Barberville, they're in, they're in the business anyway. Uh Christie met them here the other day and signed up and got the deposit for the water set of source. Uh a lot of repairs from the last tenant that was in the restaurant, so it's, it's taking longer and uh having to replace a lot of stuff and. She's, she and her husband are working and son yesterday and today and all this week. Very nice, gonna be a, more of a, a country setting, you know, type of uh food and uh mountain food. That we're all used to, not, not the specialties, but. And also that uh they're in the, in the restaurant portion, that it'll be, she's applied and it's already been accepted in. Cox County, but it's also gonna be a program that you're gonna do here of getting food to the elderly, the shavings. It's through this, through a state funded program, so those that qualify and uh gotta. Need a certain age group to qualify, you have Preston, we make it. But it, it is a, it, it is gonna be a good thing, they'll be delivered to their homes if they want to, they're, they can come in, do a sit-down or if they're. Uh if they're unable to come, it'll be delivered to them. That was, that was the part that was exciting to me, that we've got a lot of people that can need that nutrition every day. That's, so that'll, that'll be available as well as the traditional restaurant. I don't, I don't, did she discuss that with us?
Yeah, she did, she said she was gonna try to get that going.
Yeah.
Lisa Lovely Girl, and I've been on her Facebook and that, oh, I'm excited what's the name of it is gonna be.
The name of it's gonna be Southern Bill.
Southern Bill, she's got a Facebook page.
It's good. What kind of food is it, fast food?
Your, our, our food, our coun- country food.
It's, it's, she said it's country soul food.
It's based on concrete.
That's right. And when she says soul food, she's talking about good for the soul. But they, they seem to be a nice family, I like to say, but uh it's, it's gonna be another addition to the town, so. Hopefully y'all can support it, if we can.
Yeah, somebody coming in and going out.
Yeah, yeah.
I like the all you guys.
What's the name of it?
Southern, Southern Bill.
Southern Bill.
Southern, mm-hmm.
If you guys get an opportunity to look up Backroads back to watch it.
Yeah.
When you get home on the internet, I want you all to kinda uh familiarize yourself with that group and, and some of the things they do and some of the, some of the. Some of the people that, you know, that they might be able to bring into our town to spend money. You know, we've always, I've always said that tourism is, is, you know, is not only bringing people from other states, it's actually bringing people into Everts that know they don't spend money here, even if it's from Harlem. So, you know, with a new restaurant coming in, we got people that comes in from Harlem that come and live here, they see me every day and make a living, but. Those are things, those are things that bring money and, and generate excitement, they generate uh traffic, and traffic generates money. That's basically what they'll do for businesses. So a lot of good things tonight, uh has anybody got any questions for Big Daryl or before he leaves?
Yeah, you're talking about the backroads, the uh Vermont, uh Google that to look that up, that, that's who's been here and looked at the school. They've got a pristine garage, Larry, you'll, you would enjoy looking at this, I mean, they're actually taking Subarus and modifying them. I mean, they have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in these vehicles and they're wanting, they're needing our trade. Uh I've already volunteered Larry to be a, one of the, the teachers of the program, but no, seriously, they, they're, they're serious about it, but uh they, they've got. Three different operations already and people, they're, they've got waiting lists to take this train. I mean, some amazing welding work that they do, but uh and they build these cars for, it's Subaru. Sponsors them in racing and uh, whether, whether the racing takes place here or not, it's around, it goes around the nation. But it's, it's gonna provide a lot of work. I hope and pray for it.
We wanna stand by it, for the truth.
Anything we can get, and that sound like a good thing.
Yeah, there's.
And we, we want them to know that they've got our full support, I think I speak for everybody in the room. Has anybody got any questions for Big Daryl? Mark, you got anything, sir?
No, sir.
All right, if nobody's got nothing else, Jason's not here, somebody's gotta take his place. Jackie made a motion with Jerry, Larry Sank is all in favor, he's adjourned. Thank you, guys.
You're kids, huh?
I think there was your water sitting there.
No, ain't mine.
It's good to see you, Ben, that.
Well, guys, we're gonna have some exciting stuff going on in Harlem, make sure you give me a like, comment down below, subscribe if you haven't. And we'll see you guys on the next one.